Aloha. Welcome to the inauguration ceremonies for the Hawaii County Council from 2014 to 2016. I'm a member of ceremonies, I'm Sherri Bracken, and I'm very thrilled and honored and humbled that the county council asked me to be with them today. It's good for me, it's good for the radio stations for which I work, 105 Oahu Country. Let's have a round of applause for the members of the Hona'aka'aha Jazz Band. It's always impressive to me how much talent we have here on Hawaii, whether it is theater, performing arts, or music, or whatever, and how all these young people, it's really terrific because you know the future of our county is great and the future of music is great when they're learning this kind of music. Now, the members of the 2014 to 2016 Hawaii County Council will come to the stage with assistance from conch shell blowers Ka'wana Landers, Luki Laka Imanu Landers, Zain Kamale Aloha Soper, and chanter Kanani Atta. And for those of you who don't know, Kanani Atta, in addition to being a talented and knowledgeable chanter, works for the Hawaii County Department of Water Supply during the day. I'd like to... I'd like to introduce you to the members of the 2014 to 2016 Hawaii County Council in almost alphabetical order, and please hold your applause. Drew Momo Kanuha, Councilmember District 7, parts of Kaila, Akua, up through Kona Old Industrial. Valerie T. Coin Dexter, Councilmember District 1, Wa'inaku, up through Makua in parts of Waimea. Aaron Chun, Councilmember District 2, downtown Kaila, Kalahana, Tomohana Gardens. Miley Maderos David, Councilmember District 6, Volcano Village through South Kona to Kona Hospital. Karen Eoff, Councilmember District 8, Kailua View Estates, up through Guanajuulu and Michaeloa Beach Resort. Gregor Illigam, Councilmember District 4, Hawaiian Paradise Park, Kapoho, Makai'a, Pahoa Town. Dennis Fresh Onechi, Councilmember District 3, South Kailo in Decatur, Alabama. Danny Peleka, Councilmember District 5, Shipman Industrial Park, Mauna View, Ma'ka'a, Pahoa Town. Margaret Willie, Councilmember District 9, Wa'inua, Waimea, Kohala. Councilmembers, please take your seats. Before we move on to things, one, I'd like to tell you that this is a great ceremony, but you would not hear it if it weren't for the services of Mayor Romero. Thank you so much, Mayor, for this ceremony. Before we move on, let's also acknowledge the chief executive of our county, the Honorable Mayor Billy Canoy, who will be joining us as keynote speaker in a bit. And thank you to Third Circuit Court Judge, the Honorable Ronald Yubara, for being here to administer the oath of office. And by the way, if you've ever been at Judge Yubara's court, you know how he feels about cell phones or anything else interrupting the business at hand. So if I were you, I would put those cell phones away and make them quiet. He's tough, I've seen him. Thank you so much to him. And really especially welcome to all of you in the audience, because this is, of course, a wonderful occasion. Election years are difficult times, elections are difficult times, and I'd say that here in our county, we had perhaps a more challenging time than usual, with storms and lava and general election issues going on. But all that is behind us now, the election is now, the future is now, and these men and women before you have an incredibly challenging job. They've committed and we're counting on them and on Mayor Billy Canoy to do what's best for Hawaii County and all its people. I'd like to ask you all to please stand as the color guard for people by J.R. OTC presents the colors, under the direction of Colonel Charles Verta. And I'd also like to ask Councilmember for District 1 Valerie Coin Dexter to join us, she will be singing the National Anthem and our state song, "Hawaiian Hono'e."
Oh say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed, had the twilight's last gleaming? O's broad stripes and bright stars, through the perilous plain? Are the ramparts we watched, were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night, that our flag was still there? Oh say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much to Colonel Charles Verta and his team, and color guard from Kailua, J.R. OTC. And please stay standing while we welcome Dean Larry Ignacio, who most recently was associated with the Annunciation, is it Annunciation, yeah, Annunciation Council, which is in Waimea. Dean Larry.
Aloha. That's not enough. Aloha. Thank you. My job this morning is to call on our heavenly Father to come and be a part of this blessing, to send His Spirit down upon all of us. But I'm a firm believer that our God is always with us, and that God works for people. And so all of us here are truly blessed this morning, that we can gather as His people and celebrate this great day in our county. I must begin by saying that this last two years has been a challenge. We had a flood, we had an hurricane, and we had the lava that's coming down on our people. But we have also been blessed by our county, by our council, who gave us such a feeling of hope and security. When the flood came and we were lost and stuck up the mountain and we couldn't get out of there, the mayor and his staff came and they worked on New Year's Day to the day and to the night, and on New Year's Eve also, to the day and to the night, so that our people could have access to their wonderful world, because we were stuck on the mountain. My friends, that's our God in action. I want to say thank you also to all of those who have reached out to the people of Oahu. When the hurricane came, how this community have come together, that is our God in action. And now, with the recent lava flow, I need to say a tip of the compliment of apology to the civil defense and to my friend Daryl, who has given us this feeling of security that it's gonna be okay. And so all of them, we say thank you. I want to thank help who really responded to the people in need, and that was so wonderful. That, my friends, is the God that we don't have to call, that is already here within us and within this great county that we call the Big Island. I believe that this is the most precious and the most beautiful and the most gifted island in all the world. And we need to thank those who are worthy of this call to take care of this planet. And so my prayer for this day is that they may continue, because they have given us two wonderful years of their service, and we felt the greatness of this council and also of our county is. And I ask you, Lord, that you may continue to bless them, that they may continue to do the work that you called into it, and to bless all of these people who have come this way. We live in the most beautiful place in the world, and the reason for that is because all of you, each and every one of you, made a beautiful place, and we pray this, as we say, amen and eke.
Thank you so much to Dean Larry Ignacio, and please be seated. The members of the council are honored that all of you are here today, including, there are some people who are sort of special guests for the audience. I'd like to acknowledge some of those special guests, and please hold your applause until the very end. Representing Congresswoman Tulsi Gabbard, Dwayne Kye. Represent, now you know now I have a candidate for, I'm sorry, we're holding our applause, nothing personal, Dwayne, I know they love you. Representing United States Congresswoman Maisie Herono, Anne and Marvin Ebusunno. District Court Judge, according to Margaret Masunaga, you here, Margaret? J. O. Shimato, outgoing Hawaii County Council Chair. And from Hawaii County's leadership team, we have prosecuting attorney Mitch Roth, First Deputy Prosecutor Dale Ross, Police Chief Harry Kubo Cherry, Fire Chief Darren Mazario, and we have county department heads, Corino Antonio, Department of Water Supply, Steve Arnett, County Housing, Nancy Crawford from Finance Hill today couldn't be here, but Anna Sacco, her deputy, is here. Clayton Honma, Parks and Recreation, Donald Jacobs, Information Technology, Tiffany Kye, Mass Transit, Dwayne Kanuha, Planning, Wally Lau, Managing Director, Warren Lee, Public Works, Stuart Mahida, Hawaii County Clerk, Laverne Amori, Development, Gerald Takase, County Liquor Control, Sharon Toriano, Human Resources, and last but not least, Daryl Olivera, Hawaii County Civil Defense. Let's give everybody a warm welcome. It's now time for the administration of the oath of office to all the council members by the Honorable Judge Ronald Yubara, Third Circuit Court.
Will the council members, you guys, please stand and raise your hand. Please repeat after me. I am solidly swear before the throne that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. And the Constitution of the State of Hawaii. And that I will faithfully discharge my duties as county council member to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Now, I am going to call up each council member separately, and Judge Yubara will present them with their certificate of election, starting with Drew Momo Kanuha, Councilmember District 7. Valerie T. Coin Dexter, Councilmember District 1. Aaron Chun, Councilmember District 2. Miley Maderos David, Councilmember District 6. Karen Eoff, Councilmember District 8. Gregor Illigam, Councilmember District 4. Dennis Fresh Onechi, Councilmember District 3. Danny Peleka, Councilmember District 5. Margaret Willie, Councilmember District 9. Okay, council members, Judge and Mary, you may be seated. We're now going to have remarks by the incoming chair of the Hawaii County Council, the member from District 7, Kona, Drew Momo Kanuha. Drew was born and raised in Kona, he went to public schools, he went on to the University of San Diego, where he got his bachelor's in, I believe, political science, right Drew? And he also had a minor in business administration. And just a personal note, for those of you who think the idea of becoming part of the county council was a thought that he had five years ago, which by the way was after he went to work as a legislative aide-on-law in Edward's work in Waimea Schools, I got to know Drew Kanuha when he was about 15, and he would come to community meetings in Kona with his dad.
Thank you Sherri for those nice words, it's an honor to be up here. Aloha'akou, everybody, mahalo' to all being here. This is a great event. First off, I'd like to thank you all for being here. Thank you to our Oahuanai friends who came from so far, and all of my family from Kona, a lot of everybody else's family from Kaukuna, Kohala, all over this island, even through all the states, so thank you all for being here. Aloha. And to those who couldn't make it, you're also on our minds and in our hearts. So mahalopia'akou for all that you have blessed us with. Today is the day to celebrate and be joyous. After months and months of working hard, campaigning, sign making, door-to-door, mail alerts, everything you can possibly think of to get elected, we have colleagues here that got elected, so this is a good day to be proud. You, you guys chose all these wonderful people, and I'm so proud to be elected along with them. And we are humbled by the trust that you have placed in us. I want to say thank you to all that were involved in making this event possible. Mahalo' to the Kona High School Jazz Band, and another round of applause. Of course, the U-Lors, you guys were great as well, you know, Val said that they would come and do it, and I thank you for that. The Kailua High School J.R. OTC color guard, Abudin King, Larry Ignacio, thank you Sherri for being the emcee today. And mahalo' Judge Yubara, we are honored to have you at these levels. And of course, thank you, Councilmember Valerie Coin Dexter, for your beautiful voice, wow. And of course, mahalo' Mayor Ke'aui for being here, and I'm sure we'll have an amazing speech right after my stop. You know, as I look to my colleagues, I see amazing potential and endless possibilities. This is a time where we need to work together, we need to work as a team, to cooperate and collaborate to get things done. Everyone always says they'll use these words too much. To me, these words are not used nearly enough. These past two years on the council has only reinforced, in my mind, a Hawaiian saying that I've always gone by, or always lived by. Aloha'akouui ke'alopia. No task is too big when done together by all. I'm looking forward to working with these eight other council members, as well as the mayor and his administration, to help shape a better tomorrow. We can do this and we will do this. We owe it to those who have gone before us, our kapuna, we owe it to ourselves, and we owe it to our keiki, our future generation. The challenges ahead are great, but the opportunities are even greater. Working together, our future is bright, and anything is possible. So thank you all for being here, and mahalo' to the council members, you guys are amazing. Thank you.
Obviously Drew is a little taller than I am. And now our keynote speaker, and of course, this is a man who actually needs little introduction, but of course, I'm going to introduce him anyway. Mayor Billy Canoy is in his second and final term as Hawaii County Chief Executive. As chief executive of this municipal government with 2,500 employees, he's helped guide this county through some very, very challenging economic times, working with the county council. I know from personal experience of being all over this island, that he has, along with his team, helped provide communities on this island with public projects, parks, infrastructure so needed around this 4,000 square mile island. Mayor Canoy graduated with honors from the University of Massachusetts at Amherst and earned his law degree at the University of Hawaii's William S. Richardson School of Law. Before going into public service, before being elected, Mayor Canoy practiced public interest law and advocated for the people of Hawaii at the federal, state, and county levels. He has served as the Chair of the Hawaii Council of Mayors, and he's the only Hawaii mayor now serving on the National Advisory Board of the United States Conference of Mayors. Mayor Canoy was born and raised right here on this island in Kalapano, he and his wife Takako have three kids, and I say kids, they're getting so big and old, they're pretty soon not going to be called children anymore, Liam, Justin, and Leena. But there's a couple of other things about Mayor Canoy that I wanted to mention. He had the brilliance to select and the charisma to convince Chief Daryl Olivera to come out of retirement to head up Hawaii County Council. Melissa, that always looks at me and says, "Did you have to say that?" Yeah, he always does that. But really, we're very glad that the mayor convinced him, and Daryl is living on a walk of, living a happy life, and we're glad he's here. Both the mayor and Chief Olivera have received high praise from Capitol Hill, thanks to Congresswoman Tulsi Gabbard, who introduced a resolution, letting everybody know what a great job they're doing during our current slow-moving lava disaster. And they're... And they praise those all the way to the streets of Kahala, to very grateful citizens who are glad that our county is planning for, has been planning for, what has happened and what will happen, all the while taking care of the rest of the business of the county. And Mayor Canoy, in the middle of all of this, managed to complete the Ironman tryout on world championship with all the Hoikey citizens. Now, literally, when I say there were a few minutes to spare, there's a cutoff. You don't finish on time, you don't finish. And he literally came in with just minutes to spare. And as mayor said to me just a few weeks ago, it is so much better to be an Ironman, to almost be an Ironman. So please join me in welcoming our own Iron Mayor, Billy Canoy.
I wanted to bring a mop, but since you brought a mop, seriously. I wanted to take this opportunity, this being the last inauguration, that I will get to be a part of Chief Executive, to outline my 24-point plan on the dress-up issues facing the county of Hawaii. So please get comfortable, all of you. Very proud, very proud to be here at such an outstanding move of Hawaii County's best enterprise. First mayor was sworn in 46 years ago in 1968, Mayor Shinichi Kimura. And for the last 46 years in Hawaii County, our administration and our council, I've worked together to address the needs of the people of Hawaii Island. And now as the campaign is over, and you see each of these wonderful leaders who represent a special place of Hawaii Island, I feel very proud, I feel very excited, I feel very optimistic of what the future holds, considering that our community has spoken, and the word of our people are finding. And what we have sitting up in front of us are our leaders, who represent all of you. And every district they represent, and all of their constituencies, are also our constituents and our districts. They're all one and the same. So how about another round of applause for Hawaii Island's best enterprise? Everybody told me, hey, bro, you gotta keep 'em shut, yeah? Why do you like cut out, you like shut? I was thinking, hey, no, man, let it go this way. No more much of that. Other than, I want to share one thing to all of you. I know each and every one of you, we've all talked about different issues. Me and Margaret hang out all the time, contrary to what some of you know. We barbecue, we kick ass, we act just like this. Each and every one of these council people, I've had the opportunity to get to know, to get to talk, and we always talk about the challenge. The challenge of leadership, the challenge of making difficult decisions, and the importance of putting aside politics and ideology and making those very difficult decisions in the best interests of our community. Sometimes those decisions can be tough, and sometimes leadership can be lonely, and sometimes it's, you know, difficult to go one way and difficult to go the other. A lot of times, it's 51-49 either way. Somebody will be upset at the decision we made, or make those decisions we must. That's why we ran, that's why we got elected, to make those very difficult, very tough decisions. And there's so many things to consider, a veritable plethora of challenges. I just wanted to use veritable plethora, because I saw my councilman basically in the crowd, and I wanted you there to know, those are our key in our office, being council never go to waste. You know what I mean? See, for me, mahalo. But this is a quote from Theodore Roosevelt, who's our president from 1904 to 1912, who Scott Reedley's killer, O'Kone, called a bully, Paul. But he had this saying, and I apologize for this, I was trying to say, for every man, man and woman, for every his, his and her, because I get flaccid and I'm very sensitive, but I put it to him without hoping too long, so bear with me on that. Theodore Roosevelt said, and who had to make very difficult decisions himself, "It is not the credit of God, nor the man who points out of a strong man's stumble, or where the door of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who women, who are actually in their arena, whose face is marred with dust, sweat, and blood, who strives valiantly, who earns and comes up short again and again, who knows great enthusiasm and great devotion, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at his best knows the triumph of all change, and who, at the worst, if he fails, fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who will neither victory nor defeat." I just wanted to share that to let all of you know that this endeavor, this privilege of leadership, of service, to strive valiantly, and if we come up short, if we earn again and again, it's okay, because we're pursuing the great enthusiasm, the great joys of serving our beautiful Hawaii Island. And at the end of the day, you know, we're going to agree, we're going to disagree, but we don't need to be disagreeable. You know, my administration, my department heads are available to each and every one of you. Any one of you need our support, our administration, we're here as partners, as friends. And as Council Member Chair Drew Kanuha said, "It's about cooperation, it's about collaboration, and it's about collective effort." Because at the end of the day, our community deserves our very best and no less. So mahalo and congratulations to each of our wonderful council members being inaugurated this morning today. How about a last round of applause?
Let's thank our Iron Mayor one more time. So, Mayor, are you going to do the Ironman again? "Of course," he said. And this will be the training part. Before we say aloha today, a huge mahalo to everybody who helped organize today's event. There are so many volunteers, so many folks within the county who worked very hard to make all this happen. I'd also like to thank the Hona'akahai Jazz Band, and I urge you, when you see them, that they're going to be performing somewhere, go see them, because as you heard, the folks are fabulous. Our conch shells and chanter, Ka'avana Landers, Lukilaka, Ka'avana Landers, Zain Kamale, Aloha Soper, Anani Atum, our chanter. Of course, the Hiloai ROTC, Judge Vonnell Yumara, our keynote speaker, Mayor Billy Canoy, Deacon Larry Ignacio, our singer today, Valerie Poindexter. And mahalo to each one of you in the audience for being engaged with our county government. These are your council members, these are the ones upon whom you will be calling when you need things done. I'd like to now ask Councilwoman Valerie Poindexter to lead us in Hawaii aloha. She wants us to, everybody stand, join hands, and she'll start singing. Okay, now, as council members, we're going to come up, so you can go back. We're going to, right, they're going to grab their stuff, and then we'll do the recessional. And during the recessional, we are going to once again be lucky to have accompaniment by the Hona'akahai. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. Now, it's been a good chance to talk with them and with all of the department heads.